All right. Well, let's, let's get this going. Upon this meeting for order, this is a regular meeting of the Planning Commission of the town of Clarkdale. It's Tuesday, January 17th. So shall we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Rico. Commissioner Andres.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Present.
And Chair DeBlanc.
Here. Do, were we expecting? Is, do we have somebody missing or did he?
He called in that he wasn't gonna be here.
Okay, thank you. All right, and I think it looks like I'll be skipping public comment. Yeah, so if we move on to minutes, approval of the minutes. So. Is there anything anyone needs to say about the draft minutes from the previous meeting? All right. Are we going to, do we have a motion?
I moved to approve the minutes from the October 18th meeting.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Great, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nothing there, okay, great. So this is very exciting, we are excited about these staff reports. And so much to learn.
We could do it.
And I'm excited about seeing Ruth Mayday in person. How about that? What a day. I hope you're staying overnight, you don't have to drive home.
Actually, if I go home 17, it's really easy.
Oh.
And I'm going uphill rather than down, so I don't have to worry about skidding off the edge.
So you go over to 169 and 169?
Then 169.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Yeah. Going around, not over, I did that once. Once.
You're going to Chino Valley?
Yep. I drove over once, it was raining here, I thought, nah, I'll be fine. I was not fine.
All right, wonderful, well, we're looking forward to these reports, thank you.
All right, so the Broadway Road improvements, the Phase 1 is done, obviously, that's the, what you see completed now, which is the roadway, there's some shoulder work that was done, curb, there's an asphalt walk, multi-use path. So where it has stopped is where we're stopping for right now, because there are some issues with some drainage. And so it's gonna take a little bit longer to get that section designed and built, but Shepherd, well, it's Adura now, Shepherd, it used to be Shepherd West, and it's working on those design plans. But it's gonna be a while before we see a whole lot of activity there.
Now, we're talking about. Where does it stop exactly?
Right, it stops right about.
Before.
At the campground?
Yeah. Right after that, I think.
Yeah. So that next, like I said, that next chunk, the first little piece will be relatively easy. But once you get on the other side of that little narrow. Spot, it's. Very drainage and topo-y.
We ask, is it okay to ask any questions during this report? Has, I walk some of that frequently. And there's a spot across from that, is that the Elks Lodge? Okay, right across from that, it looks like there's, there's a wash. And there's a place where a railing had been loose and they had to come back and fix that. And it looks like it stands the potential to be undercut, right underneath that sidewalk.
Where, that's one of the things that they're looking at, is some of the field engineering that happened last time. Didn't, I don't think took full account of some of the rain events that we got.
Okay.
And we've had some pretty serious rain events over the last couple of months, and that's, we're seeing some issues where we've not seen them before.
Okay, thank you, but they, everybody knows about all that?
Yep, yep.
Great.
Yep, they're out there looking at it.
Good, thank you.
The Waki Inn update, we are in review for that, that's the Hopi project right down by the Tuzigoot, yep. That's going very well, they're, the architect and engineering company that's doing the work there has been highly responsive. We expect plans in shortly for construction for review, and engineering plans are underway, we'll be talking about some offsite improvements. There is an issue with water pressure down there, so there's going to be putting in a. Pressure valve, an RPG, so that we can control the pressure a little bit better.
Can I, can I ask a question on this project in particular? Your, your construction plans are coming, do we not see this because it's on tribal land?
No, it's actually, it's not tribal land.
Okay.
We don't, a planning commission doesn't see this because the zoning was already in place.
Does Design Review Board see it?
Design Review Board did see it, yes, and they did approve it.
Okay, because that's my concern, is it's a two-story. You know, structure, and is it in line with? What's envisioned for the Bitter Creek area, as far as? Timber and making it look rustic, I don't know.
Sure, so this would be more in the Broadway focus area plan. So it is. It is, it does reflect, more reflects a pueblo style of construction, so stucco, you've got the little wood piece, I can't think of the name right now. Viegas? Those sorts of things.
Oh, okay.
So it, it does, they did a very good job with making it fit and making it represent the Hopi Nation.
Awesome, I can't wait to see it, so it's, so they're gonna connect to the town's water?
Yes.
And sewer?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. So the newsstand is the. Well, it's the newsstand, it was the newsstand before, they kept the name, it's pretty much gutted. They're continuing to work on that, we expect to get the rest of the plans in here shortly so that they can start reconstruction. And the plateau, I know that, Ellen, I saw your email, we did have this on the list, I totally forgot it was on there, so I apologize for any confusion. So the final plat for plateau is going to Town Council on next Thursday, no, next Tuesday? Next Tuesday, the 24th. Tuesday after, excuse me.
24.
Right. Yes.
Is that the one that I just read about, a 52 unit on South First or First?
Right, right at the end of South Street, it's actually right next to the museum, right?
Yeah, I know where that is, I just got confused because I thought it was a new one on a piece of land off of First South.
Please correct.
Yeah. Isn't that the apartment complex? Yeah, the same one.
It's a multifamily, yes.
Last years.
But they're going, so they're gonna get a condominium plat approved now, in case they decide to sell units versus rent them. At the time they started this, they weren't sure what the market would be, so. As, the decision was made, you might as well condo it now, rather than try to go through that later. So that's why we're looking at plats.
And, and one of the requirements, I know the planning commission did, in fact, I did, is that we asked that there wouldn't be any rentals less than 30 days.
Right, and that is in the CCNRs.
Great.
Yep, that is in the CCNRs for that. So those are the big four, does anybody have any other questions about any of these?
Would you remind me about the newsstand, is it going to be a bar?
Yes, so the newsstand half will be the bar, and where those apartments were was going to be retail space.
Was going to be, or it's still?
Going to be, where the apartments were is going to be retail state space.
So one operation? Bar and retail?
Right, that they'll lease out to somebody else.
All right.
And I don't think that it's going to be their retail space, it will be retail space, somebody can, at least last time I talked to them, someone could lease out.
Or whatever business.
Correct.
Wants it, okay, thank you.
And that has a second story on it? Balcony?
Yep.
Did they satisfy the neighbors that?
Yes.
Their privacy will be maintained?
We went back and reviewed all the privacy things with them, and that's one of the things that we'll be continuing to review, to make sure that there's as little interference off of the site as possible.
And you have buy-in by the neighbors that?
This is, yeah, most of them, you know, their concerns, and rightfully so, are noise, you know, late at night, and, and light, and light trespass, and everything they use up there for lighting has to be dark sky compliant, and they can't make a lot of noise past, what is it, 11 o'clock? So they've agreed that they're going to come up with some more sound barrier and sound reducing. A lot of the things they did were like glass, which can echo, so they're going to be looking at some other materials that will echo less, so that there's no sound producing across the street or behind.
I'm kind of new to the neighborhood, but my neighbors, their collective reaction was a big sigh, because apparently when the old newsstand would get out, people would come down Main Street drunk and all that kind of stuff, so. Any attention to that, or I guess there's not much you can do about it?
There isn't a ton we can do about it, I do know that the police in the past spent a great deal of time patrolling there and dealing with that kind of a nuisance, and I don't expect this to be any different, I don't know that it's the same target market.
That's what, I was kind of going around the corner to ask that, is it? What demographic, what market?
I think it's going to be. A lot more upscale, I think they're targeting a younger market. And a much more tourist-oriented market.
Okay. I'll pass the word.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? All right.
Wonderful, thank you. Wow, that was quick. All right, action items. Selection of Chair and Vice Chair. Does anything, anyone have anything that they would like to discuss?
Do, do our current Chair and Vice Chair wish to keep their positions?
I'm happy to.
Okay.
If. Uh huh.
And Vice Chair, yes.
Are you happy, okay. I, I, I would recommend that, I think you've been doing a fine job, and I would recommend that we keep the same Chair and Vice Chair as we have had.
All right, um, anyone? Can I make a motion that we, we continue with the same Chair and Vice Chair?
I second.
Yeah. Okay, all right, mo, moved and seconded, and all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed? All right, awesome, thank you. I think the best thing I have going for me is that I don't miss a meeting.
No, you're good.
I just don't. Let's get downstairs now.
All right. It's hard to chair when you're not here. All right. Discussion items only, historic preservation ordinance, role and responsibility of the Planning Commission. Oh, good. Thank you.
So as most of you probably know, we have been talking about a historic preservation. Um, the staff has been moving through the certified local government process with the State Historic Preservation Office. And before we can ship it off to the feds for final approval, we have to have adopted an historic preservation ordinance that deals with specific things that the Secretary of Interior requires, demolition permits. Rehab projects, all of those kinds of things. So we are going to be working with a consultant to get this ordinance pulled together. You guys should have received letters inviting you to the kickoff meeting on February 7th.
We did, I think we did get them.
Good, yeah. Did you get one? All right, we'll make sure you get one. Um, that will be mostly an all-day open house, you can come in, check out what's going on, they have a couple of questions to ask, you know, what do you want to see in an ordinance? What do you not want to see, what's your idea of historic preservation, all of those kinds of things. So. The Planning Commission will play a unique role in this, because while the Historic Preservation Commission will be talking a lot about the language and the requirements and those kinds of things. Once the ordinance is together and everybody agrees on the language, it comes to Planning Commission for approval. It does. I know, right? Surprise. So I just wanted to real quick go through that approval process, because we do have people here that haven't done planning in Arizona, don't know what the rules are and how any of this works, so that when we start working on this, everybody understands what their roles are. Now, there are going to be a number of, of group meetings, the one that we're gonna have on the 7th will be a meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission, but we've invited all the other boards and commissions that would be affected by this, namely you. To participate in that meeting. One of the things that I'm hoping that we get, and I'm almost certain we will get plenty of involvement from the community as a whole, but also from the Planning Commission, Town Council, Design Review Board, on, on how this ordinance goes together, because there are a lot of moving parts to this, and a lot of things that happen that we weren't anticipating. So we're trying to make sure that we cover all of our bases, and this is the least painful it can be for everyone. All right, Gus, go ahead. So here we are at the starting line. Before we even roll the car to the starting line, there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes. Typically, for an ordinance, we don't start writing them unless they're required for some purpose. Everybody's up in arms because of noise from something, so we have to, you know, amend an ordinance, or write a noise ordinance, or write a dark sky ordinance to control the, you know, use of lights at night. So that's one process. Like, a lot of times we'll have to write ordinances in response to legislation or Supreme Court decision, things like that. That's another process, but what we're doing here is a completely new ordinance for the zoning code that will regulate historic properties in Clarkdale. Now, we're limiting it to just the commercial blocks. And anything, any other commercial properties outside of here that have been listed on the National Register. So for instance, Miller Warehouse is on the National Register. I think Cliff Pelé's building on the way down the hill is on it as well. So there are very few buildings outside of downtown that are, have been deemed historic on the National Register that this will also impact. So. That's one of the first things we do, is sit down and go through that National Register, fit, figure out exactly which buildings will be included in this ordinance.
Question, so because this, it makes sense to me now that the Planning Commission has the vote on it because you proposed it as a zone? Would it be included as part of an existing zone or its own zone?
It will be its own district.
Oh, okay.
It'll be its own zoning district. And it will have its own set of rules specific to the buildings and structures in that district.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Yep. So. Let's go to the next slide, Gus. So staff gets together, we have a pre-race strategy, we talk about what other commissions or what other communities are doing. We're fortunate in that the consultant that we've hired, John Frock, is a longtime planner in the state of Arizona. He was the Community Development Director for the City of Glendale for 14 years. He was also their Historic Preservation Officer, so he's well-versed in both planning and historic preservation. So he'll be helping us move this, this ordinance around, along, and, and craft something that's specific to Clarkdale. So. One of the other things we do is we look at existing ordinances, we've been, for instance, the Historic Preservation Commission has reviewed Prescott, Cottonwood, and Williams. Those three ordinances were recommended to us by the State Historic Preservation Office as good model ordinances, so we've, the, the commission has looked at those, we have an idea of what, they have an idea of what they'd like, and we'll be discussing some of those things as we move along as well. All right, next, Gus. So we look at a lot of things when we're, when we're writing an ordinance and when we're reviewing one, so one of the first things we look at, like I said, is a motivating factor behind the ordinance, are we doing this because we have to? In this court case, yes-ish, if we want a certified local government designation, we have to have this in order to be able to apply for any grants through the federal government or the State Historic Preservation Office. We have to have certified local government or CLG status. So that's what the motivation is. Plus, for Clarkdale, its identity is very wrapped up into its historic buildings. And one of the biggest problems communities have that don't have an ordinance like this, if something happens to one of the buildings and it's destroyed or partially destroyed, we don't have very much detail in what, what has to replace it. So that's one of the biggest things that this ordinance will do, is provide very specific guidelines on what you put in that, that hole along Main Street from something either burning down or falling down, or whatever happens to blowing up, whichever direction it goes. So we want to make sure that we have very specific guidelines about what is, what kind of architecture is allowed, what kind of materials are allowed, how tall can it be, what can it look like, what can it do? Those are the kinds of things that are very important when it comes to the Historic Preservation Ordinance. Not just, the demo and replacement is a big thing, but also when people want to make changes to the exterior of the building, we don't have a lot of guidance right now, and what we do have is rather broad and nonspecific, which does not hold up well in court, so we need to be able to define what it is that we want, what it is that we're looking for, and how it should look. So when we go through these ordinances, that's the kind of detail that we'll be discussing, does this, does this convey what everybody wants? Does this do what we need it to do so that we're not just checking the box? That it actually will impact the historic downtown and, and help preserve those structures? The other thing we look at is who does it impact, is it just the building owners, is it the visitors, is it the other people in town? How does it impact them? Most of you know all about Prop 207, and how it can impact ordinances and how we regulate things based on diminution of value. So we have to be careful that while we're doing all of these preservation things, we're not diminishing the value of someone's property. How does it affect the average citizen, this isn't, this particular ordinance won't have a huge impact on the average citizen, but when we do things like marijuana or short-term rentals, those all obviously have impact on the average citizen, and we need to take a look at how that, how those people are affected, and what we do to mitigate any negative impacts. How does it impact the regulated population, are we being more strict, less strict? Are we adding processes? Are we making things more difficult for them to do business in Clarkdale, or are we making it easier, or has it not really changed that much? How does it affect the way the town operates, and how does it affect our processes? For instance, if we have to do a demo permit, we need to have a process in place for getting that demolition permit approved. We need to have an application form, we have to have a process of who gets it, who reviews it, who okay's it? How does it? And how does that process end, is it approved, is it denied, who does that? So those are all of the moving parts that we look at when we do a new ordinance. All right, Gus. So once we go through all of that, and we've got a pretty good draft of an ordinance, then we can go to the rollout, now we can actually roll up to the starting line. Go ahead, Gus. The first thing we talk about is notification, and in Arizona, they are very specific about notification ordinances. It's 15 days before the date of the public hearing, and we will be doing a public hearing at Planning Commission for this. We have to send letters. We have to post, and we have to publish in a newspaper of general circulation.
So this is just like a proposed zoning change?
Sort, yes, ish, yeah, it's the same process. For this one, however, because it's going to impact a larger group of people, we'll be noticing everybody on Main Street that owns the building, that has a business. Plus, because we may be changing the uses by more than 10%, we have to publish in the newspaper a display ad, not just the little legal ad we usually do, so there's a little extra work involved.
What do you mean use by 10%? How do you quantify a use?
I mean, basically.
It's semi-quantitative.
Typically, you would do it by square footage, right? I mean, you have to have some way to quantify it. But because we can't really quantify the impact as being more or less 10% changing area or, or regulated or anything like that. We're gonna go ahead and do the notification, the extra notification, because this is one of the things in going to all of the lawyer conferences that I go to, this is the first thing they go after, did you do notification properly? And we've had to go back and I've had to do meetings over, because you said Tuesday, January 17th, instead of Wednesday, or Tuesday, January 18th, instead of Wednesday, January, oh, wrong, gotta start all over.
A ballpark figure of how many properties you're gonna send this notice to, I mean, how many, how many properties are affected by this new zone district?
Um, well, like I said, it'll be a couple down in the industrial park, all the historic buildings in the, you know, the commercial blocks, and that would be about it, we'll probably, we'll notify the homeowners in the area, but it won't affect them.
I'm sorry to interrupt, so you're talking maybe a dozen properties?
Yeah, probably.
Okay, and the, my red flag goes up for everybody about Prop 207. Because I cannot imagine any new restrictions being helpful towards the equity building part of owning a piece of property. I mean, it, nobody wants more restrictions. So how do you, how do, how do the lawyers say to deal with that?
So there's a couple of ways we deal with it, first, the National Trust for Historic Preservation has done studies that show that neighborhoods where there are historic preservation ordinances actually have greater value, the, the homes in those neighborhoods have greater value than those not in those districts. So we have that, and then we talk about opting out. So that it's, it's an overlay district and, and certain property owners can opt out if they want. I'm reluctant to go there because I don't know, I, giving people that out is going to be an issue.
You mean opting out of the historic district?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the way Cotton Woods is written, is so that people can opt out of it. I'm not convinced that that's a good route to go.
Opting out without any consequences?
Well, you don't get, so when this is written, when we write this, I see where, what you're asking about. So when we write this, we make it beneficial to participate. You get an expedited review process, right? That's the biggest thing that we can do, is expedite the review process. I can't waive fees because, unless Town Council approves it, so we can have a reduced fee if you're a historic property, you're participating in the historic preservation district, we can do a reduced fee for applications, those are the kinds of things that we can do.
In Santa Fe, they have non-complying historic. So they're in the.
They have what?
Non-complying historic buildings.
Gotcha.
And what, well, I'm not picking it up, and what they do is just, they have opted out, and they, you can't take away their historic designation, so they had to create a whole other way to handle it. My experience with zoning that was optional was Oak Creek Heritage zoning in Sedona, and it's a didn't work out real well, as you may know, so I don't know what, why somebody would want to limit what they can do with their property. I don't know how, I mean, I'm just from a business point of view, I couldn't imagine doing that, it's like putting a deed restriction on your house, you know?
Yeah, to one end, yeah.
Doesn't make sense.
And when you die, it stays with the property, so.
Yeah. Huh, I'm sorry for being negative.
No, 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 that's fine, I mean, because these are points that are absolutely 100% going to come up. And those are things we're gonna have to have some discussions about.
If it gets stopped, this ordinance, say it doesn't go through, just to curiosity, did it, looking at the cities that have had it passed, they didn't successfully have it passed? They didn't successfully have it passed? And so, and they have people that participate in it and all that kind of stuff? So you think it's a worthy expense of staff time and money to do this for our 12 buildings?
It's not that expensive, thankfully. I do think it's worthwhile to do for the 12 buildings here. I do think it's something that we need to provide building owners the opportunity to participate if they want. I think that you'll see more participation than not. I think we need to ask the question.
Okay. One other, gosh, I'm just an evil person, but I'm just concerned about a bit of a slippery slope with residential. And I know that that's on the Clarkdale Historical Society's mind. And I just don't, I, I'm, I'm not real comfortable with it, but I'm, hey, let's go for it. But let's keep an eye out on that because I think that's dangerous.
So that's one of the conversations we had at the get-go was when we talked about doing this. I said, look, we need to do commercial properties first. Those are what people see the most. And then if it's a roaring success and we have no problems with it, then we can talk about neighborhoods. But I am reluctant to regulate single-family residential like this.
Yes. Well, no kidding. The problem
Kind of like my head where it is and not.
I haven't got political speak down totally. I've been on construction site too long. But, you know, you might want to look into the Santa Fe non-complying historical because people will get up in arms to think that they might lose their tax break or that their desert little plaque comes off the wall or, you know, and I, I, once again, you know, we've got such, I think that ship has sailed a little bit when you get two-story apartment building looking things built next to 1914 houses all the way around upper Clarkdale. And, but anyway, I guess there's nothing really to do as progress.
Well, like I said, it's something that the town council said, we need to deal with this.
Okay.
We're dealing.
Okay.
It's something that I do think is worth, like I said, having the conversation with the building owners. Hopefully, we can get them all to come, show up. We can have rational conversations with them about how this truly will impact their buildings. Because right now, they're all subject to design review. And the design review guidelines we have are way broad. And don't provide the guidance and specificity that we would need for a, an historic area.
One of your carrots would be to have a different review in lieu of the design report, review board?
Correct.
More geared to historical?
Exactly. That would be one of the things we would do is that it would go to historic preservation rather than design review board.
Okay.
So.
Do you have any idea about what the sentiment is generally of the property owners in the area, the, the area that would be considered for historic?
They're generally supportive.
Okay.
Because if, if you don't participate, I shouldn't say if you don't participate. If your property is on the national register and you don't maintain it or you alter it significantly, it comes off the national register, you lose your tax benefits. So keeping it on there is a good plan, especially if you're doing, if you're doing a cer, what we call a certified rehab. So that's one where you send all of your plans off to, first to Shippensburg, then to DC. They all approve it and then you get tax breaks for the rehab project.
So if, if you owned a piece of property and you decided to remodel it and decided to opt out, then you're just going by the design review board and all that kind of stuff? But you're not automatically losing your historic?
No, not automatically, no.
Okay.
No. It's not automatic. It depends upon what you're doing to the exterior that was
Which is how it is now.
Right. If you did nothing to the exterior, you said, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm cliffed. I own that little garage building down there. I'm not bothering with any of this. But I'm going to remodel the inside of the building and turn it into a doctor's office. And I'm not going to do anything to the exterior. There's zero impact.
Right.
It's when I decide that I'm going to cover up all the brick with vinyl siding.
Yeah, well. Ew.
That's when you get into those situations of
But that's latent and they would know they, you know, I think people who buy a historical house here kind of know Yeah. Not to do that. And to the people that have done it and, and, and more, they, it's just not a priority for them.
Yeah.
That's America.
So, right, exactly. So one of the things that we are going to be, if the Historic Preservation Commission will do after we get this ordinance done, Prescott has a really well-done guide to historic homes in Prescott. So you bought a home in a historic district or here's how this impacts, you know, your property. And, and here are the things you should consider. And, you know, here are the things that you should probably shouldn't do. And if you have questions, here's our Historic Preservation Officer, you should contact them. So it's very informative. And so it's not like thou shalt not, you know, change your windows without my permission. You can't repaint your trim without my permission. None of that. Here are the things that are important. Here's the things that this Historic Preservation Office looks at. And here are the things that are not important. That answer it?
No, but I'm okay with it. I've been on both sides, so it's okay.
Okay. All right, so no, back to notification. So that's basically how the notification process works. So we're again in the abundance of caution, we're going to overdo rather than underdo. All right, next, Gus. Public hearings, we're all familiar with these. That's the part where everybody comes in, we talk about what's in the ordinance. I get up here and do a presentation. Historic Preservation Commission will be here, the consultant will be here. And we just go through and we talk about it. And then we give everybody an opportunity to get up and say, I hate this, I like this, I don't like this part, but I do like that. And just take public comment. And then if we have to go back and change things, we go back and change them. If we don't, well, then we keep right on going. But it'll be interesting. This is the part where we hear from people who are absolutely dead set against it. If you're a property owner that committed, no way, do I want my properties in here. No, thank you, not doing, nope, nope, nope. Then we have an issue. But this at least gives them one opportunity on the record to state that they don't like it and why they don't like it.
So will there be provisions in it where, like, say there's a property owner and says, I don't want to be part of this. I want to opt out, whatever. But then they sell their property sometime in the future and the new owners want to participate. So there'll be a way
They cannot opt back in.
Okay.
Yeah, that's absolutely permissible.
Okay. I think that my tint on things comes from New York City too, where a total abuse of the Historic Preservation Commission existed. Total abuse. And it's, it's people, we're just people. So a comforting statement that, well, you, it's not going to be about painting your trim. Oh, baby, it is. And it's like, there's a HOA mentality.
Yeah.
You know, and it's, it's, once again, I use the term slippery slope because you get people in charge of other people. And personally, I, I just think we're going to be, we're going to be talking about this for the houses in about a year.
I don't think we are because I don't think there's the, honestly, I don't think there's a support on town council to do that. It would be a huge lift and we have so many other things going on right now. I don't think it's something they want to pursue.
Distracted for a while, but I know it's huge on the minds of the Clarkdale Historical Society.
Right.
You know?
But fortunately for us,
Yeah.
sets the priorities. So we will be, like I said, we're going to be focusing on the historic commercial buildings first because those are the most obvious. And it, like I said, it gives us a chance to preserve what people know as historic Clarkdale. All right, public hearings, town council. So after what happens at the public hearing, happens at the public hearing, you guys all get to vote and decide whether or not we forward it to town council with recommendations for approval, recommendations with changes, recommendations with stipulations, or send it back for more work. When it goes to town council, town council can take note of some of that, all of that, none of that. And they could implement some of it, none of it, all of it. They can make whatever changes they want. So we send forward what the Historic Preservation Commission has recommended, what we hear in the public comment period so that if we need to make changes, we can make them. Then it goes to town council for approval. And that again, will likely be another public hearing that's entirely, so the agenda for town council is entirely up to the mayor. If we don't have any objections, if it goes relatively uneventfully, we could go to town council without a further public hearing. If we have objections, we have to have another public hearing. If it, there's some contention about it and we still need to talk about it some more, we've had it a planning commission for a couple of meetings, nothing has changed. We can take it to town council and they can hold a second public hearing. And again, they can make all kinds of changes, they can make no changes, they can just approve it. It's entirely up to them. All right, Gus, next. When things go wrong. Right, this is, Ellen could write this part. So when things go wrong, like I said, the number one thing that goes wrong with, when we implement new ordinances like this is notification for the process. And that's something that, like I said, I, I pay close attention to. I read it, Tom reads it, Gus reads it, Charity reads it, Susan reads it, to make sure that we have days, dates, times, locations, addresses. You can't just say Men's Lounge, you have to give an actual address. So we go through quite a review process to make sure that that notification is correct. The other way it goes sideways is like Ellen said, all the building owners show up and go, we don't want this, we want no part of this, get rid of it, we don't want it. All right, well, then we're just dead in the water and, and nothing else transpires, nothing else happens. I'm sure Ida's seen her fair share of contentious meetings. Few. And those are the, so occasionally you'll get people with a petition. I don't see that happening here because the affected area is so small. But that's something if we, I, I could bet dollars to donuts, we would see if we went with a residential ordinance. So when things go wrong, so when we advertise the, when we make a mistake in notification, we have to do it all over again. And we have to do it for another 15 days. So we're really pretty careful about when we send these notices out and post them. Like I said, the other things that go wrong are people are just absolutely adamant that they don't want to have this happen. I've seen Ida's death stare and she can keep people pretty much in line in meetings where they get out of control. So I don't really worry too much about meetings getting raucous. So the notification really, in, in my mind, is the biggest thing that could go wrong. And like I said, we review it constantly, so we don't have five people miss it. All right, Gus, next. Finish line, yay, we get across the finish line. So for an ordinance like this, there's a 30-day cooling off period. Somebody can appeal or contest the, the passing of the ordinance in 30 days. This is not something that we would pass as an emergency measure. There are some things that we can pass, like marijuana ordinance, we pass that as an emergency measure. This we would not. It, it just doesn't rise to that kind of need. There's no historic preservation emergency that we need to have this done right away. So there would be a 30-day cooling off period and then the ordinance would be effective 30 days after the adoption.
Yeah, it's an innocent question. Is that, does it include multifamily and are there any multifamily? Is that red Lodge historical or?
I think it is on the register, it's within the historic district. Whether it's listed individually, I don't know, but it is within the historic district. And I think I'm almost sure it's contributing property.
So this would apply to even buildings that are not on the historic district but would qualify for the historic district or no?
No, for the purposes of this ordinance, they would either be in the historic district and a contributing structure, right? Or a non-contributing structure. A non-contributed, that would be your non-complying historic building.
Yeah.
So if a building had been altered so badly that the original architecture was unidentifiable, it would be off the national register and that building would not be affected.
Would a building be affected by this ordinance if they had never applied for the national register?
If they are on the national, it depends. If they're on the, if that owner did not, but it was included in the original application, right? So let's say I own the Main Street Cafe building. And I just bought it two weeks ago. The previous owner had it on as part of the historic district, right? It, for the national register. I don't want it on there anymore. I just call up the feds and say, hey, take this off, I don't want to be a part of this. That's all I have to do. I don't want to participate, don't want to have any part of it. Everybody thinks that this is this big mandatory thing.
I got that, yeah.
And, and it's not.
And so the consequences of doing that are that you don't get priority for planning and zoning and, and design review. And you don't get any tax breaks from the feds. And that's
And the state.
And state. And so that's the impact of calling up and saying, I don't want to play.
Right.
Okay.
That's basically the impact of, of, I don't want to play.
Okay.
Ida?
Well, I want to be educated a little bit because I'm not in this area. So if we were to think of this in terms of that there's an authority in this, it wouldn't be local, it wouldn't be in the county. Is it the state? Or you're saying there's a national historic register?
So there's a couple of things. First of all, the, the, the authority for implementing the ordinance would be local. We, the Historic Preservation Commission or whatever commission is tasked with, you know, applying this, they're the ones that do that. For the certified local government status, which is what we have to have to be able to apply for the state and federal grants. That it has to be approved by the State Historic Preservation Office and then it goes off to the National Park Service for approval.
The National Park Service? Oh.
Right. Now, we are very fortunate that one of the new Historic Preservation Commission members works in historic preservation for the National Park Service out at Tuzigoo. So that's been very, very helpful.
And if you would, just say something about how this whole thing, if you were to speculate, started. We, people came here, they did stuff, they built things. And then somebody decided, or some, a bunch of somebodies decided, we want to do something that ensures that we're going to assure the future for the history. And it was, that was the motivator.
Right. That was essentially the impetus. So back late eighties, early nineties, there was a town-wide movement to get this historic preservation or this historic district established. And my, having talked to people back then that were involved with it, most of them were kids, it was quite contentious because they were including single-family residential homes. So once that district was established, down the road, down the road, everybody's like, well, we have this great collection of, you know, historic buildings here. It's a unique setting. We should preserve this. And that's kind of the impetus where this started.
So it's an interest in preserving some kind of visual and cultural significance
Correct.
For an area.
Right.
And doesn't it have like a positive effect on property value overall or not? It, yeah. Has that been demonstrated or quantified?
The, the National Trust and the, has studies that show that neighborhoods that have a historic district tend to be better maintained and have higher property values because there is that benchmark of maintenance, repair, those kinds of things.
Okay. You know, I noticed just in residential real estate that we do get higher prices if you're on the historic register. But we're already on the historic register. I mean, that, so my question is, when you say we're doing this in order to be able to apply for grants that we can't apply for now, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And we can't apply for it now, would we be able to apply for those grants? Say if you had the historic ordinance passed and no And nobody opted in, or had six opted in and six opted out, would you still qualify to apply, just because you have?
Building by building?
We have the ordinance, we have buildings within a historic district that are subject to the ordinance. What's that?
Is, so. May I?
Sure.
So initially. It's the commercial we're talking about.
Correct.
Okay. So if you took out a map. You could identif, there's an area, but you can identify building by building, like within this particular area, there's some, some buildings that don't. Comply, wouldn't qualify just because they're in the area.
Right.
Okay.
Right, so anything like that, for instance, when was the ten twelve built?
What, ten twelve?
Ten twelve?
Yeah.
I'm joking.
Yeah, I've got it though.
Ten twelve.
Yeah, I've gotta get it pretty early in the morning.
I don't know.
So. Where was I going with that?
The ten twelve, when was it built?
Right.
That's what, where we were.
So basically. When you have a national, when you have a historic district, you have two types of buildings. You have contributing buildings and you have non-contributing buildings. So this is a contributing building because it's historic, it's been well-maintained, very few alterations. The ten twelve was built much later, really is not architecturally significant, that's a non-contributing structure.
Nineteen fifty-nine. Ooh, wow. So it really, uh, is very little at stake if we pass the ordinance or the ordinance passes. And it qualifies their town to apply for grants.
Right.
We wouldn't be, and people can, as long as they're not, you know, their houses aren't egg, or they're discriminated against to the point where they can't get their plans through plan check, or, yeah.
Exactly, yeah, we don't keep that close to track.
But right now, we're not even re- residential, it doesn't enter into this.
Over the whole life, you're right.
Right, what we're talking about.
No.
One step at a time is commercial, and it's. Very few buildings.
Right.
Almost all of them in this downtown area, the town buildings.
Right.
And, did you say there's a couple?
Miller Building down there, the old warehouse.
Yeah.
And then Cliff Palais's got the little garage down, halfway down the hill. Where UVSP is, I'm just on this side of the bridge on the left-hand side. It's one of those buildings unless you know.
Oh yes, that, it's where the, yeah, okay.
Right. I think those are the only two down there.
So you could actually take out a map and pinpoint the buildings that we're talking about.
Yes, it would be a pretty short list, maybe twenty buildings tops.
Is Sukasa on that one?
I don't think Sukasa's on it.
Oh, yeah.
We can go back and double-check.
But the Lodge is, the Clarkdale Lodge.
Ninety percent sure the Clarkdale Lodge is on there.
Yeah.
And it is considered commercial.
Yeah. Yep. The, um, Sukasa would depend upon how old that building was when the initial district was formed back in the late eighties, early nineties.
Okay.
Whether it was considered, fifty years in Arizona's historic.
Well, if we don't get ahead of ourselves, this is not overwhelming.
Right. And we try to make sure that we had, have as much ironed out as possible before we bring things to you guys. Because nobody likes to look at documents and go, I have no idea what this means. And it doesn't benefit you, it doesn't benefit any of the other boards or commissions, it doesn't benefit the town for us to keep tripping over things. So we try to make sure that when you get documents, if you have questions, if you don't understand what it says in there, to call us up and staff and talk you through it.
What about this church right here?
Yeah, the church is on the list, register.
And Tina just said Sukasa was built in nineteen fifty-seven.
So it probably would qualify, whether it's on now or not, I don't know. Cause it probably wasn't, well, in the eighties, I don't think it was that old, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, thirty years.
So you're talking fifty years, is that the cutoff?
That's typically the cutoff. At least here in Arizona.
Preservation, I'm, I'm, no. Uh, may I make a suggestion? Um, every time you said, um, first we're going to do the commercial, you said that about four times. Don't say that.
Yeah.
Every time, and, and I'm not alone, so.
No, I think it would be, um, like I said, it would be very difficult to do single-family residential. And I'm, having talked to the people that were around when they did the initial district, that's what lit everyone up.
The thing that's changed, if it ever came to a vote, we now have Mountain Gate and all those other new places that could, you know, would think it's just a great idea for the. Twelve of us that own these things to be regulated by our neighbors.
What's not to like about that?
Great idea.
Well, if we were to do that, I think that we would limit the vote, it, it would be, it would be a council approval. But typically, if we're gonna form a historic, when we do things like, um. Oh, community facilities districts. One of the biggest mistakes I ever saw in a community facilities district is where the, um. The municipality, statutorily, you're supposed to limit the vote to the people within the boundaries of the district. Because they get to vote on whether they pay more taxes or not? Old Town voted.
And.
Sure, raise the taxes on this neighborhood, why not? Didn't go over well.
It's a pretty common situation.
Yeah. And, don't do that.
So we're not gonna talk about residential until we get there.
No, we won't be talking, it will be quite some time.
Yeah.
Well, ta-ta, that, that'll come up.
Well.
Hey Gus.
Never mind.
Be during your time period.
How old's your building? Alright, any other questions, any comments?
Very important.
Do we noted, thank you.
Oh, hi Reader. When is the, uh, the meet, you said February seventh?
Yes.
At what time?
There, the Historic Preservation Commission meeting starts at six-thirty. But the consultant will be here all day, I think he's gonna plan on getting here about nine or ten.
Oh, the open house part of it?
He'll have some maps of here's the district that we're thinking about doing and, you know.
And so what part of that do you think would be most appropriate for members of the planning commission to attend?
Probably the meeting in the evening.
Okay.
But if you can't make that, do come during the day and, you know, let us know what you think.
And it starts at six-thirty, and it's here.
Here.
Yeah.
Alright, is there anything else, or item seven? No? Okay. Future agenda items? Anything to discuss?
Well, I just had, um, questions about potential future agenda items, in the past, um, we had seen presentations from the developer and the owner of the Radley subdivision.
Yes.
Is there new development on that that is worthy of a future agenda item?
No, they're actually, they're gonna, their final plan will be approved, their plan of partial abandonment will be, is going to town council on the twenty-fourth as well.
Oh, okay.
So we're finally there.
Okay, alright, I just wondered if that was something. Okay, and, um, the second thing then is. I don't know that it's come before planning and zoning, but it certainly has been in the community a fair bit, and that is the property on Black Hills Drive on the south side of Clarkdale. Randy Garrison's property.
Yep.
Um, so I've heard all kinds of stuff through the grapevine, like, uh, most of it consistent, but, um, I was just wondering, is that area? Anything that's gonna come before our commission?
Not before the planning commission, but Tom, you wanna fill them in on Black Hills real quick?
Could you, could you say again, like, exactly where this is?
It's on the, well, the property that is eleven acres on the southern side of Black Hills Drive, right before Haskell Springs Road, the very southern part of Clarkdale.
Between Haskell Springs and Yellow Pie College.
Yeah, right by the college and the college vineyard, past the college or?
Adjacent to.
Right next to, actually.
Adjacent to it going west to House.
On the uphill west side.
Okay.
Well, um, it's, it's basically a ten-lot, um, plin, um. Plaid subdivision, minor subdivision plaid, ten lots, average size, one and a half acres. There'll be two, um, small, uh, cul-de-sacs to service those lots, interior lots, off of, um, Black Hills Drive. And then Haskell Springs will, there's two lots on the other end, those are serviced off of Haskell Springs. Um, all the utilities will be there.
So, so, just for context, previously the property owner had looked at multifamily housing, was gonna go for, um. Zoning changes through the Planning and Zoning Commission and they did the notification and there were a lot of neighborhood meetings, um, I live in that area, which is why I was at the neighborhood meetings. It was very contentious, and so I was thinking like, we better buckle up if this is coming to planning and zoning. Um, but it looks like he's gonna comply with R one L, which is what we've been asking him to do for a few years now, so it looks like that's. And, and some of the neighbors had said they had heard he was complying with R one L. And I keep telling them, I've not seen it on our agenda, so I didn't know if it was a future agenda item or not.
But this is a different. Endeavor than the one previous that was so contentious, is that accurate?
There've been multiple previous attempts that were very contentious, with different developers.
Right, but this one with the one and a half acre lots or?
Is, is it, yeah, is it a different developer? No, same developer.
It's, it's not a developer at all.
Oh.
It's.
They're just landowners.
Right, they're.
They're landowners that are gonna sell, you know, lots, won't they subdivide it?
So the owners of record are doing it themselves.
So for subdivision, does that need to come before planning and zoning?
Not for a minor subdivision, in Arizona, we have a minor subdivision for ten lots or fewer that. We do internal, we do staff review. Because they're relatively simple, and then they go straight to town council for final approval.
Okay, so we, it won't come before us because it's consistent with R one L, okay.
Yep, it's consistent with zoning, general plan.
Okay, and so I can repeat this information to my neighbors that inquire about that?
Yes you can.
Just wanted to make sure.
And if they have questions, they can call us.
Yeah, and I've recommended that, but some of them I don't think would, but, um, so. Um, and then the last thing, and this is a little bit, uh, nitpicky, but. This, this statement on the end of the agenda about values.
Yeah.
For the town of Clarkdale. Okay, so, um, my sister was an English major and used to critique my grammar constantly, and so I can't help myself because of that. And I know as an engineer, it's not my place necessarily to criticize, but, um, in this list of values. It, it's not grammatically parallel, and it really makes me stumble and catches my eye, and that is the second to last item. So if you, just to make it simple, if you say, these are, our values are.
Oh, yeah.
That we are customer-focused, we are preserving our history, we are economic and social resiliency.
No, we're economically and socially resilient.
Exactly. Exactly my point. Everything else you could put, we are, and then that item, but that last one makes me stumble and it, it sort of hurts me a little bit. And, and that's my only comment on that. Thank you for the information.
Alright, do we have anything else? Are we ready for number nine?
Ellen, did you have a, a, an agenda item for future?
No, it got resolved.
Got resolved.
Okay.
Okay, I was confused.
Okay, alright.
No, I don't know the area that will be on, on one of them.
Yeah.
And I read something about a new development going in on Eighty-first South, and, uh, I thought it was up in Upper Clarkdale, but it's the plateau.
The plateau, yeah, okay.
I've upped my medication.
Alright, that's all I have.
Alright, are we ready for number nine?
Is it adjournment?
Number nine. I moved to adjourn, a second.
Second.
Alright, those in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Go home!
Thank you.
It's adjourned.
Hold on.